We're back in session, it's 9:29. Next up is item number eight, RAA. Well, let me read the here. Planning and zoning commission Monroe, Connecticut, notice of public hearing to be held March 5th, 2020. In accordance with Connecticut general statutes, section 8-7D, a public hearing will be held in the Town Hall Council Chamber, 7 Fan Hill Road, Monroe, Connecticut on Thursday, March 5th, 2020, at 7:00 PM or soon thereafter concerning the following. RAA 2020-01, file number 1008E, preview menu board signs. Planning and zoning commission proposed zoning regulation text amendment amending section 2.2.1 to define preview menu board signs and redefine menu board sign and amending section 6.3.9 and 8.2.3J, section 3, to add standards for menu board and preview menu board signs accessory to approved restaurant drive-through service lanes. Complete details and copies of all related materials associated with the above matters are on file and available for viewing in the Monroe Planning and Zoning Department offices. All right, Will, what do we have for exhibits?
Exhibit one, planning and zoning commission draft text amendment. Exhibit two, regional planning agency referral notice. Exhibit three, adjacent municipal power referral notices. Exhibit four, referral to aquarium water and the public health department relating to watershed lands. And exhibit five, receipt of referral notice by Long Island Valley Regional Planning Agency. Exhibit six, receipt of referral from Metro College Regional Planning Agency. Exhibit seven, referral response from the West Coast Regional Planning Agency indicating this is a local concern, no regional impact. And exhibit eight, Metro College Regional Planning and Zoning Referral Response Draft. Exhibit nine, Long Island Valley Referral Response indicating again, no regional impact or local concern. And exhibit 10, the final response from Metro College Regional Planning Agency indicating also no regional impact, local concern. Those are the exhibits. Presentation. As the commission is aware, this is a zoning amendment that is of yours. You went through the subcommittee, brought this to you, and then the commission sent this to public hearing. This is a very specific regulation that is looking to modify and provide some purposes with regulations related to menu board signs for restaurants. The, I'll go through the text. As I go through the text, the text that would remain is going to look like regular text. The text that will be deleted is in the red strike at text, and new text is in blue, W11. The first amendment in the series of this is amending the definitions. We already have an existing definition for menu board sign, and we are amending that as indicated here on the wall in the draft. And we're also adding a new definition for what is called a preview menu board sign. And to explain that, the menu board sign is the main board if you come to a restaurant drive-through, which gives you the options for the particular restaurant and where you make your order. A preview board sign, I'm sure almost all of them down to some sort of restaurant that has a drive-through lane. A preview board sign is as you're waiting before you get up to the menu board sign, it gives you some idea of some of the offerings that are available. It helps with the efficiency and the speed of going through the lanes, and it makes for a better than for less traffic item and one. These are freestanding or could be wall signs, but they're going to be in the drive-through lanes related to a restaurant. The second amendment is our permitted signs. As I said, we already have menu board signs, and we're adding to this the ability to have a preview board menu sign. The existing menu board sign standards aren't changing with the exception that we're indicating there's going to be one per lane. So, one of the changes that we're seeing as land use has developed is that these restaurants are having more than one lane to again accommodate the traffic flow, especially fashion-type restaurants. A lot of their business is transferring from going inside to now really going from a takeout to the drive-through lanes. They have a higher percentage of business at the drive-through lanes, so obviously that accommodates more lanes. We're adding the preview menu board sign, and that sign, the commission has proposed to be half the size of the menu board sign, and they both require a permit. The third amendment in this is we have a series of existing standards that regulate service windows and menu boards. So, some of the amendments here are really just to weave in the inclusion of the preview menu board sign. And we're also emphasizing the restrictions on things such as the video and animation and blinking and other kinds of things that can be impacts to neighboring properties and other uses. So, it's really just to focus, to have the menu board sign be sort of a static image to give what the customer needs in order to make their order. When you go through a drive-through, as you're aware, you approach these menu board signs, and a lot of them have multiple steps in which you go. You approach, maybe you have one window where you order, another window you might pay, another window you pick up, or it may just be two windows or two spots you go. And we have requirements for queuing parking spaces, meaning a drive-through has to have so much room for so many cars to be on the, in the, in the drive-through lanes. And I believe restaurants, eight spaces. And what this is, the IWE is talking about is that there has to be so many spaces, the menu board can't be at the very beginning of the queuing onto the lane. It has to be inside the lane so at least a few cars can get in into that lane before they kind of sit and look at the preview menu board sign, because what we don't want is someone lingering at the very beginning and kind of having conflict with the other traffic where people are parking and driving around the building. So, that's what this requirement is doing. And in essence, that's, that's it.
Questions from the commission?
No questions.
I just have a comment.
Okay.
I see these signs as a service to the public more than a service to owning a restaurant. And I see this as it accommodates them. And even the size of the signs, you know, as we all get older, sometimes we can't see that far, and it should be a service if these signs were a little bit more eligible. So, that's just my concern.
Okay, we're allowing 16?
Yes, 16 square feet.
16 square feet, so that's, you know, it's, it's going to be a sign that's going to be right outside your car window, so it, it's like a four-by-four sign. It's a pretty good-sized sign.
Just my, think of it, it's a service to the public and to the person that's going through as a...
Right. Rob?
No questions.
No questions?
No questions.
No questions.
Good job.
Good job.
Good job, us.
Subcommittee. Okay, is there anyone in the public who would like to speak in favor of this application? Anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Any general questions or comments? Okay, back to you, Will.
Hearing, no questions and no issues. I suggest that the commission could close the hearing and thereafter take, or later in the meeting, take action.
Close it.
Hearing is closed, 9:38. Okay, item number nine, site plan review and permit amendment modifications, we have none. Deliberations and determinations. Item number 10, time extensions, we have none. Item number 11, bond releases or reductions. S U B 2016-02, file number 1259C, 36 Timothy Hill Road, I-2 District, Section 6, Pepper Street Business Park, Thomas and Stella McGannis Trust, care of Peter Metropolis, $95,000 bond.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. Pleasure to be here. Members of the commission, my name is David Yorkland, and I'm a professional engineer registered in the state of Connecticut. This evening, I'm representing the Thomas and Stella McGannis Trust, who were the owners of property at 36 Timothy Hill Road. I'll give you a little bit of history, which I think is pertinent to this request for bond release. This pertains to what the commission had approved in the past, that it was a subdivision known as Section 6 of the Pepper Street Business Park. And it was to be the last of the roads to be constructed in the Business Park that would take it out to Timothy Hill Road, which is a road that provides access to the Fan Hill Road. Under the statutes, once a subdivision is approved, the developer has nine months to report the map and post the bond. He's permitted to work to post a restoration and stabilization bond. In that nine-month period where he can start the road work, and the idea is that it gives them a chance to start the road work without posting, in this case, which would have been a very large performance bond, so that they can get a head start. When you get to the end of the nine months, you're required by statute to record the map to perfect the subdivision. And at that point, try and post a performance bond for the remaining work. What happened in this case was they got to the end of the nine months, and the performance bond was never posted, and the map was never recorded. So, effectively, the subdivision was, it was never perfected, so it is no more. It has no, no legal standing. But, what had been done was an $95,000 bond kept in post, called an erosion control and restoration bond to cover if anything needed to be repaired while they were doing this construction. Fortunately, not much clearing and rubbing to replace, but not much else. The next thing that happened was the Pepper Street Business Park, John Kimball, sold the 44 acres, which comprised of most of this subdivision. As you can see, it's outlined here in blue, there is an area. So, my client bought this 44-acre parcel. This is Timothy Hill Road here, which is existing. And part of the work my client owns to this point here, part of the work also included connecting the existing cul-de-sac on Independence Drive, a couple of hundred feet to get to this piece of property. So, a portion of the work that was bonded in the restoration of the covered property improvements that are outside of what my client purchased. At the time of the purchase, we refer to it as the Kimball bond, was released, and my client put in place a replacement bond for $95,000. He also put another bond in place for the weapons bond. Now, my client has no intention of ever going back in and subdividing his property or constructing the road in the configuration that is shown here. And as I said, he couldn't go in and build those improvements until we came back here and got the subdivision re-approved and by then this commission, and then pursued it forward and recorded the subdivision map. That's, that's the only way this work could ever happen going forward. So, we, we have a bond posted for some restoration work. The road work was started, I believe, but there hasn't been anything done out there since May, 2017. So, the first thing I'd like to do is just bring the commission up to date. I've got some pictures here. Just to get an idea of what the situation is out there. Again, keep in mind, this is an erosion control and a restoration bond. And the construction work that they did was they went in, and as I said, they cut the trees in anticipation of road work. They cleared it, they rubbed it, and then pretty much at that point, they stopped. There was excessive grading that was to be done, blasting and grading that was to be done as part of this subdivision, and none of that work was done. The existing grades that are there today essentially are what was, they're natural grades, with some exceptions of some areas where they did scrape the bedrock. But, the pictures that I've submitted is, the first one is sapling regrowth, and there has been considerable regrowth on the property, and I'll get to that in a second. The next picture to the right of that is looking east to Timothy Hill Road at large white pine in the right-hand side of the photo is actually at the cul-de-sac, the existing cul-de-sac at Timothy Hill Road. The next one is 600 feet west of Timothy Hill Road. Again, you can see that same white pine tree, and you can see that, you know, the area has started to reestablish itself. You know, there's a, there's a good heavy grass cover in the area, and then there are a number of saplings that have started to emerge as, you know, things happen in New England, the tender restore themselves pretty quickly. The next photo is, you can see, this is looking west towards Independence Drive. You can see the quarry in the very top of the photo there in Independence Drive would be just to the right of that area. On the next page, it's a picture of this large pile of fill that's been placed. This was subject to the report. The cul-de-sac for Independence Drive is right here. That large pile of fill is, was not placed by my client, and it's not even probably about 200 feet from the end from where the property is that he purchased.
It actually rings the road, doesn't it?
Pardon?
It actually rings around the road.
Yeah.
Not just at the end.
That's the, so, if you, if you go through Scott's report, and the, and the report that was prepared by Land Use Staff, which was utilized by both the weapons commission and Scott refers to it in his report, some of the things in the report that are mentioned, you know, are not even on my client's property. As far as a weapons violation goes, the bridge that was constructed in this area here, again, that's not on my client's property. The work in this area was covered in the bond, but as I said, it's, it's not on my client's property. So, there are some things in the report that were cited, but it's my opinion, my client is not, is not responsible for that work. It's actually on the property, you know, the people.
Dave, do you know if that work in that area is in the construction easement that is, goes along with this?
I would say that's, you know, a good part of it is, but in my opinion, it goes beyond that.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree with you, because I don't have a survey for that, but from looking at it multiple times, it does look like it's further south than it was supposed to be. And we aren't quite sure where the construction easement is on the actual land, because no one's got that marked in the field.
Well, we staked out the limits of the writer. The stakes are pretty hard to see, and I think some of them are already been wrote out. But, if you, if you wanted to see, find the stakes, I could have my employees, you know, point out where they are being replaced in. Item I'd like to submit is, we've been working with a forester on the property for several years now, and part of that ties into placing the property into a forestry classification, some of the other parcels that the McGannis Trust owns. The main parcel, the 75 acres, has been forested for years. So, I wanted to, you know, I think this is relevant, because this is a restoration bond, and I highlighted what Dan Lawrence indicated, and it's really, it's really the second paragraph. I was actually able to count the entire cleared area near the cul-de-sac, this forest. That would be the entire area that was cleared for the road. And the magic of New England forests is that under the right conditions, they will regenerate trees on their own. In this case, the number of oak, birch, and sassafras seedlings that reestablished in the years after they were cut now meets the state's standards for the seedlings per acre. There is no work necessary for this part of the property. There are other parts of the McGannis property, just so I can point out what the difference is. There are other parts of the McGannis property that have not reestablished themselves. They're not part of this 44-acre property. I don't know if you can see it in the area. Take a look. This area right here is an area that they've been driving motorbikes on or altering vehicles for years, and so this does not qualify. This has to be replanted, the forester's instructions. So, the point here is that the property is, is already reforesting itself, and trees are coming back. And that goes back to some of the comments that Scott made indicating that, you know, if he wanted to see, you know, an actual restoration, topsoil spray, and, you know, additional plants added, and provide an as-built drawing, it's our contention that we just let this sit. If you go out there now, there's very little erosion. I'm not saying there's not any erosion, there was a little bit of work in Sepacha, work to be done. The Wetlands Commission last week, just to give you some background, they reduced their bond down to $20,000, and some of the work they asked for was to remove the existing erosion controls that were out there, i.e. the silt fence. And there was a temporary bridge that had been built partially on the McGannis property, and Wetlands requested that be removed. And that work was done yesterday, and today, and it's completed. So, that, that was the position of, of the Wetlands Commission. The next thing I'd like to pass out is Scott's actual original bond application for this If you look at the bond application, again, this is not a, a performance bond which covers things like building a road and the catch basins and the drainage and that, that kind of thing. This was simply put in place to make sure that if the land was disturbed, it would get restored. And I've highlighted a couple of items here. The first one is sedimentation and erosion control measures. Scott had that for $10,000. As I said, the Wetlands Commission asked us last week to remove the existing silt fence that was out there. It wasn't serving any purpose anymore. Silt fence and hay bales, it was in $17,000. Topsoil seed, fertilizer, and mulch for the entire disturbed area, that was $35,000. Again, I think the foresters' report and the pictures cover that this work isn't necessary, that, you know, the site has sat there for several years now, and it's restoring itself on its own. The landscaping expense to provide for the restoration and aesthetic considerations, that was for $10,000. I left that in place. There is, as I said, the Wetlands Commission required that we leave a $20,000 bond in place. A lot of the work that is redundant, what the Wetlands Commission asked for, and what Scott asked for, it's, really, it's the same thing. So, I left that in place. Grading for site restoration that will provide for safe and stable conditions, that was in for $15,000. There was never any radical grading done on this, or this, I think there was almost a 28-foot cut on this property that was going to be blasted. That work never started. There was to be a considerable fill coming in off of Independence Drive. That work was never done either. There's supposed to be a bridge constructed off of Independence. So, none of that work was done, so I don't think that, you know, these are items that are really relevant to the property as it sits there today. And those total $77,000. I don't think that, as I just said, the items that are highlighted are really relevant anymore considering the condition of the property. And so, what I'm proposing to the commission tonight is that we reduce the bond down to $10,000, and that would leave a $10,000 restoration bond. We're planning a zoning, a $20,000 bond that the Wetlands Commission has requested that be put in place. I think it's a little difficult, and it's a little unfair to look at the property in the middle of March and determine what the condition of the property is. I think we'll prove it would be to go out and have, meet with Land Use Staff and my office in May, after everything, the leaves have come out, let's take a look at the property and just see just how strong, you know, the natural restoration is. There's a lot of exposed bedrock out here that could be planted, so. But, that, my proposal is just that the commission reduce the bond, and then we revisit it at the same, by the time we get to mid-May, late May, would be a fair time to really evaluate the condition of the property. But, as it sits there today, it's my opinion, it's in wood shape, there is erosion that's there, it's very minor. And for the most part, the site has restored itself.
And it is currently there. The $10,000 bond amount would cover any work that would need to be done to stabilize that?
I know Scott doesn't like to look at, he doesn't like to comb any of the Wetlands bonds and the Pines bonds, but as I said, a lot of the things, you know, the report that is attached to this, the permanent inspection report, was also viewed by the Wetlands Commission. So, they really are combing in this situation. I think $30,000 more than the others.
Do you know if any of that donage has been removed from the Wetlands?
Any of the lot?
The, the planks, the...
They were, the, the ones that are on my client's property were removed yesterday.
Okay.
The ones that are on the quarry property are not.
And do they plan to do anything with the stump piles?
The, no, and because the consensus of the Wetlands Commission just let them rot in place, and they'll go ahead and...
Okay.
I mean, ultimately, my client's ultimate goal is to develop this property. And so, when we go in and redevelop the property, we plan, you know, within this year, start to talk about creating a new regulation and recycling for the entire 135 acres. When we do find the human, and start to develop the property, if the stumps are still there, they'll get disposed of at that point in time in accordance with, with the requirements. They'll, they'll...
If they get, if they get the 490 Forests classification, do they, are they required to maintain that for a certain number of years, or is...
Well, if you want the full tax rebate, you have to keep in the forestry for 10 years. If you sell the property in the meantime, it was a sliding scale rebate that what you saved in taxes... save in taxes goes back to the town. So, if you got out five years, you're sending fifty percent of your estate back to the town when you determine that, when you release the forestry classification.
Questions? Dominic? No, sir.
No.
No?
Any plans to remove the invasive species, as it states?
That's, again, that's covered by Wetlands. We're really, well, I'm, I go out, I'm no expert on invasives. You know, the wetlands, some of the wetlands plants, you can see, they've established themselves nicely, but I can see some pockets of invasives. But the time to do that is in mid-May, and you can really say, that's an invasive.
The invasives are outside of the wetlands as well?
Yeah.
They're actually throughout the property?
I'm just going off of your forestry report, yeah.
The town engineer recommends to maintain the bond at ninety-five thousand.
I...
And that's a ten-day-old report, so I don't know what you've done in ten days. It's supposed to change our minds, but it's been restored.
Well, I, I don't agree with...
I've been out there myself.
I don't agree with the town engineer's assessment, you know, with the, I would agree with that assessment if the site had just been stripped this past summer, and it was all raw earth, and the, you know, and a lot of grading had been done. No grading has been done here.
I think you're misinterpreting what he's saying. He's not saying keep ninety-five thousand dollars because we need ninety-five thousand dollars. He's saying we don't have the information to determine what status this really is at, and what needs to be done to fix it. And I think what he's suggesting, which is cumulative from the staff, which is the attached report with the pictures, is to come up with a remediation plan that everyone can agree on, and then we'll talk about reducing the bond. As far as subdivision regulations are concerned, this is a little unique because it's not the performance bond, but the bonding requirements in the subdivision law do not allow anything reduced less than fifty percent. So, that would be the most that you would be under your regulations to do this?
I mean, the regulation applies to the performance bond.
Well, it doesn't really say that. It says the bond, so, I mean, we are in unique territory, but that is what the statute, that's the only governance we have in the statute.
Yeah, I've walked up there in the last show, and it is, I mean, there's a lot of air about there, a lot of invasives. There's a couple of piles. It's not just one stockpile of fill, there's a big stockpile of fill on the Timothy Hill end, and I think, and I'm not sure if it's just fill, it's a lot of, I'm not sure what's in that pile.
Apparently, there are no stockpiles on the Timothy.
So, since last...
The stockpile is on the Independence.
It's the last fall.
And that wasn't there last fall, or...
The Timothy Hill was there last fall, so that's been spread?
There's no, I'm not aware of, you know, I have been up there once, I was up there today, and I was up there last summer. I've not seen the stockpile, there was, it's been removed. There, you know, there is a very...
Well, I don't feel qualified to give a figure here, and our engineer says to leave it in place, so I don't know what the rest of you, how the rest of you feel.
Well, I'm kind of in agreement with you that we, we have to rely on Scott's report or Conrad's report, whoever did the report, the bond release report that we have. Now, you know, as you said, a lot of this work was completed this week, subsequent to this report being issued.
Yeah, I mean, Scott refers to, you know, the big board bridges and the removal of the silt fence.
Dave, other than some fill fence and maybe some construction fence that was kind of whacked over, and the removal of the planks in one of the crossings, was anything else done?
No.
Okay, so, nothing was done to address, there's actually a clear, not so much here, but when you get up into here, there's a clear path. Obviously, there's the clearing, which is obvious, but there's a clear path that takes you all the way there, and there's a part in here which is eroding in the hill, and it's probably because these guys are coming down here as well and driving on the property. But there's a clear path that, you know, can be fixed to kind of smooth back into the grade, and it doesn't need a lot of work, but I mean, it's something that should be done.
Well, that's quite the intention.
But we don't have a plan, you know, you didn't come in...
What's out there, we don't...
I know, I get you. What the report is doing, and this was done with all the staff, is suggesting that we get a plan, and say, what are the specific issues, and what is the remediation scheduled for them? And then, I think, is analysis, what is needed for the bond to cover that. But we don't have that, we don't even have a survey, we don't even know where the cuts are. I know you contend that some of it's off the site, I don't disagree with you, but we don't have any information that tells us those things. And, you know, that's sort of the problem, is that there's not a plan here as to what really needs to be done. You know, we did observe some plants coming back. A lot of it is invasive, and we didn't see the level of saplings that, because you gave me that paragraph before we ever went out there, we didn't really see the evidence that represented in that paragraph as far as saplings. But again, you may tell us a little bit more.
You know, but...
Well, no, we looked, we looked, so...
Well, I mean, there are, you know, pictures that I could take, that's, you know, well established.
And some of that is actually, I believe it'd be some of the natural, that's already, that was there before, and it's not regenerating. Those areas, they already were, were not disturbed and didn't need to be disturbed the same way as the others, so... But the main key is, we don't really have a specific as to what the issues, other than what we identified quickly in our one-day site visit and a remediation plan for that, that is coordinated with staff, rather than just jumping out there and doing it like it was done. That's another issue. You know, we found out about it after, not, oh, we're going to go out there and do this, you want to meet us?
I was...
Yeah, yeah, I understand.
What does the commission think about reducing the amount of the bond in half, getting a remediation plan from the property owner? And then having staff go out and do another inspection?
Half of the ninety-five, plus twenty from Wetlands.
Well, the Wetlands is relative to us. We have no control over that, they're a separate agency, they could release that tomorrow if they wanted to, so... And it's for somewhat different purposes, I mean, okay, it's the same site, but they are for different purposes.
I think that's a great idea.
So, we're going to release forty-five, or you're going to do it right in half?
What, I don't know, what do you want to do? You want to do it in half, you want to release forty-five, you want to release fifty?
I said, release fifty.
I think we should leave it there. Go with what the, with what staff recommends.
Well, there's not ninety-five thousand dollars worth of work up there, is there?
I don't know, I don't know.
No, I'm asking, what? Were you at the site, you and Rick were at the site?
I don't know what we're going to, what you're going to require them to do, what needs to be done.
I understand, I'm saying it's a ninety-five thousand dollars worth of work up there.
You, I think in my view, you have two choices. You either leave it the way it is, or you cut it to fifty percent, because the codes is fifty percent, and I wouldn't play with that number because that would be a present that you don't want to deal with.
Okay.
I would be comfortable cutting it in half, because they're not moving forward with the project. They have to stabilize the site, and from what we can see in the photographs, there is a significant amount of growth that's already taking place. They have to go in where there's noticeable erosion, stable, grade, stabilize those areas, plant it with something, and clean up the old stakes, the old silt fence, and the old hay bales. And I believe half of the amount should be more than sufficient to cover that. I think at this point, to hold ninety-five thousand dollars is a little bit, you know, a little bit excessive. I could see if it was, if it was, we were holding it until a performance bond was in place for a subdivision roadway, absolutely, we'd want to hold the whole thing, but they're not, they're not opposing to develop the site.
I totally understand where Mike's coming from, but I also agree with you a hundred percent.
Dave, what do you think about that?
I, I was aware of that, that clause in the subdivision regulations, that fifty percent reduction.
I mean, I think your client would be agreeable to come up with a remediation, I mean, we don't need a detailed twenty-five day, we need a remediation plan.
I don't think there's a lot of detail to address out there after walking was happened. There are a couple of areas that, you know, that need to be addressed, and it's primarily what I see is the road between Timothy Hill and Independence. You used to be able to pass freely from Independence up to Timothy Hill, and then up to this area in the corner, so they used to run all three vehicles. It's been blocked off to Timothy Hill now, with some very large waters, so that, you know, kids on ultra- eight vehicles, they're going to find some way in there. And Independence is pretty much blocked. So, you know, their convenient access to the property, keep ramping it up, is pretty much over.
But in your, in your client's best interest, you know, if there is a, an approved remediation plan in place prior to him just going ahead and doing work, it might prevent unnecessary work from being done. So, that would be a recommendation.
Yeah, I think what he was hearing is, this is what Wetlands wants me to do, so I'm going to do the right thing, I'm going to go out and get it done.
Yeah.
No, I think that's, we agree with that, a fifty percent reduction.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Well, since we are in deliberations and determinations, let's wrap this up. Cheryl, entertain a motion.
Yes.
Okay, Leon?
Motion to release a fifty percent bond, S U B. two thousand sixteen, O two, file number one-two-five-nine-C, thirty-six Timothy Hill Road.
Subject to remediation, what's that?
Subject to remediation, correct?
Subject to remediation, I guess.
And you seconded it?
I seconded.
All right, so we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion?
No.
Conditions, anything?
No, that...
Mike, are you good?
I'm like, you don't need everybody.
Well, is there anything that you would like to interject?
No, I just, I love my, I love the way the staff recommends, I love that.
Well, if there's no other comments, I'll call a roll.
Maine, yes.
Ambrosi, yes.
Porter, yes.
Condon, no.
O'Reilly, no.
Motion passes. Commissioner Ambrosi is going to excuse himself, he's not feeling well. Okay, pending minute meetings, February sixth, two thousand twenty. Let's see. Should we keep Ron seated?
Sure.
Ron, you're still seated, for the moment. Okay, meeting minutes, February sixth, two thousand twenty.
I move to accept the Planning and Zoning Commission, February sixth, two thousand twenty, meeting minutes as drafted.
Second. Little motion, we have a second. Any discussion, additions, corrections? Anyone?
I don't know, is it?
Oh, yeah.
Nope.
You're good, you're good?
Good.
You're good. Call the rolls, starting with Ron.
Snider, yes.
Maine, yes. Porter, yes.
Condon, yes.
I'm, yes.
Pending application deliberations and determinations. Okay, first up is E F P. two thousand nineteen dash O two, file number one-zero-three, seven and fifteen Main Street, D one district. It's an application for an excavation permit for seven and fifteen Main Street. Excuse me, seeks to excavate and export approximately eighty-eight thousand five hundred cubic yards of material, which is intended to go across the street to four and seventy-one eighty Main Street, which was approved on a companion application on February sixth. Purpose of the excavation is to lower the front portion of the site for a future building purpose, and more in line with, it's still slightly above the existing street elevation. Anticipated to last twelve to eighteen months. The excavated material transport activities are proposed to be restricted to the hours of nine a.m. to four p.m., to avoid peak traffic on Main Street. Project also includes the installation of a stormwater discharge pipe proposed within the abutting Old Turnpike Road right-of-way. Proposal is seeking waivers of zoning section six-point-four-point-nine-B, creating artificial slopes greater than twenty-seven degrees, zoning six-point-four-point-nine-C, changes in contours within twenty-five feet of the property line, six-point-four-point-nine-D, artificial slopes greater than permitted within fifty feet of the property line, and six-point-four-point-nine-E, artificial slopes greater than permitted within fifty feet of the street line, served by an unsignalized driveway via Old Turnpike Road currently, and it includes an existing house and a detached garage, both of which are going to be demolished. It is within fifty feet of town boundary, and notice was sent to the town of Trumbull. There are no conservation easements, it's not within a hundred-year flood plain, no regulated wetlands. Public hearing was open and adjourned on November seventh, two thousand nineteen, reconvened and adjourned on December fifth, two thousand nineteen, reconvened and adjourned on January sixteenth, two thousand twenty, and reconvened and closed on February sixth, two thousand If approved, this, this filling and excavation permit will expire on March fifth, two thousand The grading waivers that I previously mentioned, if they're granted with these site plans, shall be limited to the grading shown on sheet two-point-two-one of the applicant set, plan set. Any changes or deviations from those grades has to be pre-approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission. There'll be no onsite material sorting, crushing, or processing of any kind, and no importing fill onto the site. And the plans have to be revised to show that the access driveway is now going to be at the northern end of the property, rather than over the existing southerly driveway. And the recommended bond is fifty thousand dollars.
So, start with a... I make a motion to approve the F P. two thousand nineteen dash O two, file number one-zero-three, seven fifteen Main Street, as drafted.
Second. Okay, discussion?
Almost there.
I still want to voice my concern about one of the grading waivers, that would be the sideline, the southern sideline, where the butts, another residential property. I voiced this during the public hearing, and I'm voicing it again, that I am not in favor of granting a waiver on that southerly property line, but I am in agreement with the rest of the waivers. Any other discussion?
What's your, what's, what don't you like about it?
I don't like that it's a steep slope on the property line.
What about the northern property line?
Well, the northern property line, it's, it's kind of a unique situation because we have the shooting range there and he's created a slope and we're just going to end up with a little bump there that it doesn't negatively impact the shooting range. But having a steep slope that close on the south side where there's a, I believe it's a residential property.
It is.
I just don't like the impact on the residential property having a...
Is it occupied, do we know? Did they?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's two houses.
But they didn't come and voice anything, right, at the meeting?
No.
The person behind them, right?
Well, the person further up in the back did.
I'm just trying to, I got you.
No, but it's, the commission is granting a waiver, it's, it doesn't have anything to do with what the neighbors think, it's, you know, we have regulations that don't allow great change within twenty-five feet of a property line and we do have the ability to waive that if we deem it's acceptable for the project. I don't feel that this is an acceptable waiver on the southerly property line, but that's, that's my opinion. During deliberation, most of the other commissioners didn't hold the same opinion as me. So I'm just, again, voicing my opinion. So, is there any further discussion? Anybody?
No, sir.
Call the roll.
Schneider, yes.
Hold on. You're not seated on this one because this is a liberation that started with Leon, so Leon is going to be registered as absent.
Okay. Sorry, Ron.
It's okay.
Call the roll, starting with Bruno.
Mainie, yes.
Porter, no.
Condon, yes.
O'Reilly, yes.
And Ambrosi, absent. Okay. I would like to get the preview menu board done because we made a commitment to a prior applicant that we would do that, so.
So, you want a motion?
Yeah.
To approve R A A twenty twenty dash oh one, file one zero zero eight B.
And you have to add an effective date, give me two seconds. Effective, no earlier than March sixteenth.
Okay, effective March sixteenth, with the earliest.
Second.
Okay. Now, Ron is seated for this, correct? Okay. So this is the text amendment that the commission is putting forward to allow preview menu boards at drive-ups. We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion, any questions?
No, sir.
No.
None.
Okay, call the roll.
Schneider, yes.
Mainie, yes.
Porter, yes.
Condon, yes.
O'Reilly, yes.
Okay. That leaves us... You don't have to leave yet. What should we do with sixty-seven Crosshill since Leon has left the building?
Somebody else could see.
You can see somebody if you want to deliberate, or you can put it off to another.
What does the commission want to do? Pardon me?
What was it, what was said about the, there were some issues before, prior?
Those were all resolved.
Okay.
Yeah, if those were resolved, the hearing was closed, so we can't entertain new information. We, you know, everything that we have that has been submitted and testified to during the public hearing is what we base our decision on. So.
I'd be willing to deliberate today.
Me too.
Okay, all right. See ya. Mainie?
I'm out.
You may leave the room.
Whose turn is it to get seated?
We're sticking with... Thought we were sticking with Ron.
Ron, yeah, but we...
That only gets four of us to know any more person.
Oh.
Who's next?
Oh, all right, I can't see that. Dominic.
Dominic is seated. All right, Dominic, you're seated for this. Okay. You may begin.
Do you want me to begin?
Anybody?
Well, a couple of things. One is the residents are kind of stuck there, they're not, they can't, they have no alternatives. They can't flee, they can't go someplace else, they can't find, I mean, they can't find another house, but they're kind of stuck there. From what we heard from, I don't know, what they had thirty residents on a petition, it's, can get tough, can get loud, dusty, whatever. They've been willing to put up with it pretty much. But they just want their Sunday mornings. I can understand that.
The same could be said on the other side, too.
I can't hear you.
Same could be said on the other side, they're stuck as well. There's no other option.
There may be alternatives, there's a lot of fields, there's a lot of spoken space in town.
Well, the, the problem is, you know, I know there was a comment made that someone drove by Wolf Park on a Sunday morning, it's a field with a seventy-foot base.
They're not set up.
So those fields are not...
They're not set up.
Set up for this particular use that they are looking for.
I gotta, I, I drove by it and there's, you almost can't even see the houses from the fields, there's so much. And that's without leaves.
Well, I think, I think it, from what a lot of the residents said, it's not so much seeing it, it's hearing it, it's the parking. There was one... Some options put together. It was submitted as a, an exhibit. You should have had this in your packet tonight. These are the issues that the residents were mostly had issues with. Noise, parking, trespassing and litter to a minor degree, public safety with traffic and people walking on Crosshill Road. So, those were the, the key bullet points that the residents were pointing out, that they had the biggest issues with.
I think what they were trying to say, too, is that if, if they had these extra hours, that the half hour between games could be extended a little bit to where people could leave before people come in. Did you get that as well?
Yes.
So that's to kind of alleviate the traffic aspect of the complaint?
The concern for the parking.
Trespassing, I mean.
I don't know, you walk through some of the trees.
They gotta call the police for that, that's, they gotta call the police if they're having a trespassing issue. I mean, I know the guy said he talked to the police and they said, oh, don't call us, but whether they start at eight A M. or twelve P M., there's, it's not going to stop somebody if they're trespassing, that's a whole other issue.
Well, no, they said that was to a minor, trespassing and litter to a minor degree. Their issues are the noise. They have, they have no time that they can sit out on their deck Sunday morning and have some peace and quiet and have a couple of coffee.
The time that they're there.
Yeah. I'm pretty sure the, the yard where the field is short is a wooden fence. I don't, I don't believe, when I went there the other day, I don't think you can jump the fence to go get the balls. I don't know, it's hard, it's, it's hard to say no to kids. What are you going to say, you just can't play? Unless, it's my...
If you look at this graph, do you have this also?
Yeah.
Every evening, they're there. And all days Saturday, most of them will have Sunday, so.
Dominic?
I heard some positive, they're willing to work together, they're willing to compromise, and they're willing to keep the noise down. It is a field for kids. You know, it's limiting the use is a drawback. Overuse is also a handicap. But at the same time, I look at it this way, this town doesn't have much to give the kids for recreation and all that. It's a tough situation, but I, I would almost move toward the kids.
But I, I understand exactly what you're saying, you know. But I also feel for the property owners.
So do I.
And we, we as a commission have to look out for everyone in town. And it's, it's difficult in this situation because we have to look out for both sides and somebody's not going to be happy. You know, that's what it's going to boil down to.
Somebody's not going to be happy and we have a tough decision to make. Sometimes you have to make tough decisions.
Yeah, I, I kind of equate this to, you know, some of the houses along DeMaris Parkway. You know, the Parkway's been there since the fifties, some of the houses were there before the Parkway. And those people, I think, have a legitimate complaint about noise. And then you have other people who come and put a subdivision in alongside the Parkway and they, they want the state to put up a sound barrier because they built houses alongside the highway. Well, some of these people have lived here before they were able to play baseball on the weekend. You know, and people bought a house adjacent to a ballpark where they only played ball Monday through Friday evening. And then in ninety-five, that got changed to play all day Saturday and half a day Sunday.
You know, so just like that sound barrier, there was some talk about some kind of a barrier there, too.
Well, that's, that was a suggestion that the, the resident group came up with and literally wouldn't commit to it.
Some of those neighbors weren't there, though. Well, I think one of the most vocal ones wasn't, he said, I think he said he recently bought the property.
Right.
So, with your Merritt Parkway argument, it's kind of like...
No, but, but some of the people have been there for fifty years or more.
Yeah. And I mean, I wish there was some sort of, like, way for everyone to walk away a little not happy, if that makes sense, or a little happy.
Well, you know...
If they couldn't, I ask, you know, to shave some time or something, if there's a way to kind of...
They said that they, they can play there Saturday afternoon, they play one game Saturday afternoon and they try to get two or three games in on Sunday. You know, if, if they have from, what was it, twelve-thirty to...
Twelve-thirty to six P M. on Sunday is what they already have.
The biggest concern is Sunday morning.
Correct, that's my biggest concern, Sunday morning.
To push it up Sunday morning, maybe ten o'clock.
I don't think that's going to make a difference. Plus, we're talking three hours and we're talking for, what, two months? So it's not every Sunday. It's baseball, it's kids, it's this town. I don't know, I'm probably already excited, but...
Talking three months?
What are the kids going to do if they don't play baseball? Where's that concern to?
They're, they're still going to play two or three games on Sunday.
You also said that if there was only two games, that they wouldn't start at nine. Could there be something in there saying that?
Not really.
But who wants to get up that early if they, you know, if you have to, to make up a game? But if you only have two games, you're not going to start at nine, I would assume.
No, but they also said that they want to try to get in as many games as they can.
If they have to.
And then if they have a, if they have a rainout following the weekend, they're going to have even more games that they want to get in because they have makeup games. So, whatever hours this commission tells them they can play, I have a feeling they're going to fill those hours with games.
My other concern was, I do feel like they didn't shave off time, but the way they were talking, it did seem like they're going to try to make more, you know, moves to keep things quiet. They were going to, you know, put up signs and then alternatively, neighbors complaining about signs where, to an extent, I felt like at some point, some of the neighbors were complaining to complain and weren't listening to what was actually being said. Which, again, I have not been there during a game, so I don't know, listening to two different sides kind of of the story. And, you know, when one of the neighbors is coming up and saying that they're working well with them, they're trying, they, they put some stuff on the table and then the next neighbor comes up and says, I don't want the signs that are going up to say, please be quiet for the neighbors, it's kind of...
I, I think that...
Are you ever going to make the person happy?
I think that the, the main thing is like Dominic said and like Michael said, is Sunday morning.
Yeah.
I mean, people need a little bit of quiet time to relax at their home.
How long did they say a game was, two hours?
Yeah, and then an hour in between to get ready.
The evening to eight-thirty. And then started them at twelve, that would still give them one extra game, right?
The rest came out from, what, eight o'clock in the morning? Tell the rest?
Nine.
Nine, nine A M. to...
The game is two hours, so nine, ten, or eleven.
It says to eight-thirty, but I guess that's just, I thought it was sundown.
So, that's his table, sunset.
Yeah, at sunset, so varies.
Aren't the other parks in town nine on Sunday?
Yeah, according to what Parks and Rec gave us, there's, sort of their schedule.
Right, but you also have to realize that Wolf Park doesn't have houses within a hundred feet of the ball fields, you know?
I get it. It's still a park, man. Like you said, you're going to get somebody upset, but...
In a perfect world, you don't limit the use of a park. But here it's different.
Well, yeah, technically, this is private property.
Yeah, we have to take to this.
Yeah, it's private property, it's not a town park.
But still, granted, uses a park.
Well, it uses a baseball field. It only uses a baseball field. And it's, there's a gate or a chain across the driveway that when, when they're not, during their open hours, but they're allowed, the place is supposed to be closed. That's in their nineteen ninety-five approval.
I'd be want to compromise and give them some peace in the morning, on Sunday morning.
Wasn't the travel, travel baseball's only Saturday and Sunday, though, right?
Yes, I believe so.
That's what it said, yeah.
And there, and what do you say, fourteen teams, fourteen games? I don't think there's enough time. I mean, obviously, the one guy said that his, they were two games short because they couldn't finish.
I don't think that was travel, I think that was just literally, I think.
That's easily because the park isn't open for those hours, though.
So could we extend Saturday and Sunday hours to eight-thirty? So it's in the evening and I can keep the morning shade? Because I'm seeing, I don't know who this graph is from, but I'm seeing on weekdays, they play till eight-thirty.
Even if it's, if it starts the end of March, it's going to be dark at eight even with the hour change. And seven-thirty, I mean, you really can't play when it's even a little dark.
Lights, right?
If anything, I would say nine-thirty, if nine-thirty is Saturday, then make nine-thirty Sunday instead of extending until nine.
They, they said, they said officially, it's nine-thirty on Saturday, but they can start at nine because they thought it was at nine. Right, that's the only thing. You take in the half hour to give them more, say, you have to start at nine-thirty.
Still helping them out. So they know they can't start at nine, what's a half hour?
Yeah.
But an extra two and a half hours is important.
You rush, you rush in between a little more and hopefully make it up in between games.
Yeah, right now, they're, Saturday, nine-thirty to seven. Monday through Friday, four P M. to eight-thirty P M. Well, no, four P M. to sunset, but no later than eight-thirty. And Sunday, twelve-thirty to six. I could possibly be con- be convinced to extend the Sunday hours to correspond with the rest, but not Sunday morning. I'm, I'm against Sunday morning.
There's only two days on the weekend.
What's that?
There's only two days for them to play in the morning. With school, you can't do Monday through Friday.
Right, and they haven't been playing since nineteen ninety-five on Sunday morning.
Right, well, nineteen ninety-five or even before that, there wasn't this many people in Monroe. There were more farms.
You had parents with, you know, one household.
This isn't easy for parents either. Not only are you paying nine-hundred a kid, but you gotta wake up early in the morning on a Sunday, you gotta lug them. This is about the passion of the kids, this is about the kids.
Well, it's also about protecting the rights of property owners. That's the biggest thing that we are charged with as planning and zoning commissioners, is protecting the rights of the property owner.
Because those rights are noise ordinance, is that what it's coming down to, noise? Because they're confined in, in the park and it's just the noise that's impacted.
The noise, the parking, you know, everything that they've, they've, you know, brought before us during the public hearing.
I mean, do we have other places like this in town where is residential up against private property that has like a noise thing? And I know we've talked about it when industrial's on.
All our schools.
In the schools.
Churches. But those are also bigger properties than this. Have more perimeter buffers around them.
Also, I gotta look at, things change. What worked ten years ago doesn't work today. As population grow, you have to make adjustments.
Well, that could go, that could go either way, Dominic.
I, I understand. I, I live next to something I was having, and I, I make adjustments. I mean, I like to have quiet stew, but it happens that there's noise there and I have to take it. What are you gonna do with the kids?
Play three games on Sunday afternoon.
So we eliminate one game?
Not eliminate one, right, that's, I think that's all they're playing right now, is two or three on Sunday afternoon.
They're playing two in the morning, two in the afternoon.
No, they're not playing any in the morning right now on Sunday.
No, what they wanna do is play two in the morning and two in the afternoon.
I think so.
So if we go and extend time in the morning, we are cutting one game. So we're talking one game? That's, that's what we're talking about.
See, I would rather give them a little more time in, in, on the tail end. So they can get three games in for certain on Sunday afternoon. Let them go until sunset on Sunday. Let's, don't start early.
Now, twelve-thirty's a hard early start for you, there's no like bringing it to ten-thirty or eleven or something like that?
I would prefer not to.
Not to, okay, she's not asking.
Well, you made a point. So if we cut one game in the morning, does it, is it, is it twelve o'clock or twelve-thirty or eleven o'clock? I mean, there's a leeway there that could give them some time to adjust.
He said, he'd like twelve-thirty.
I like, you know, twelve-thirty because they're gonna be there, you know, earlier doing prep and getting set up and... So if the game starts at twelve-thirty, they're gonna be there at eleven-thirty or twelve o'clock doing their prep work.
No, I, I agree they should have Sunday mornings, the residents should have Sunday mornings. But that's the only morning.
What do you think about?
Well, that's less onerous on them.
Do the math, so you have two hours a game, right? And then they wanna, they want at least a half hour they need between games. But if they do an hour, then the people can leave, people can come in.
So if they start at twelve-thirty, they're over at two-thirty. Then they have a game from three to five, a game from five-thirty to seven-thirty.
Yeah, but there's two double headers. So try and find the hours for four games.
Yeah, they said that.
And if you, and if you start at ten even.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm a solid no on Sunday morning.
For discussion's sake, I'll just bring one more thing. Most people like to sleep on Sunday morning.
Right.
But nobody sleeps past eleven o'clock. Nobody sleeps past ten o'clock. So there's a compromise there.
I think it's doable if it was eleven or ten-thirty or anything, to give them just a little bit more time.
I, I'd say I give them to them at the tail end. Because right now, they can only play till six PM. So we give them till sunset.
So...
That gives them another hour and a half at the tail end.
Let's say let them start at eleven and then give them something at the tail end.
How about twelve-thirty and sunset?
No, I said we gotta give them something more. Twelve-thirty, so I mean, that's almost half the day is over at that point. It's afternoon.
I, I'm not saying that people sleep that late, I'm saying, you know, people want peace and quiet. You know, to sit out in their yard if they want, you know, it's...
If it was their choice, they would have nothing on Sunday and a piece of quiet all day.
All, all, all weekend.
Right, they would just want a park not there.
But that's compromising.
As a chairman, I think we have to bite the bullet. Let's give them eleven o'clock and go another, an hour or two extended later.
Just to give them four games if they need it.
I won't support that.
I'm a no on Sunday morning too.
I'm okay with the eleven.
Me too.
I could, I could do that.
And then extend it a little later, right?
Till sunset.
I'm for...
But I don't think I could go any earlier than eleven.
I like to see voting as a block. I like to see a unanimous vote.
Me too. I would love to see a unanimous vote for twelve-thirty to sunset.
Dominic, I don't think you're gonna get a unanimous vote. I don't think we're gonna get a unanimous one.
Eleven gives them another hour and a half, which is almost a game. And if they finish before dusk or sunset.
They leave.
That's better.
I leave.
Right. And hopefully, they don't need four games every time.
That doesn't mean that necessarily gonna play three games in the afternoon.
That's true.
allowances would open it up no matter what.
Yeah.
And I end up playing two games.
But they can play as many as they want between those hours. Anyone gonna make a motion? That would be acceptable?
Twelve-thirty to what?
Well, you can change your hours.
Or do we want, wait, we need to, we need to, we don't wanna make a motion, we wanna give will, instruction for...
Draft up, yeah, to do an approval of...
The times that we decide.
Eleven to sunset.
Dominic, what time's?
If I can't get a unanimous vote, I'll call eleven to sunset, I don't know.
Twelve-thirty to sunset.
Twelve-thirty to sunset.
Eleven to sunset. I mean, that's...
Well, you don't need any...
No, we don't need a unanimous vote, we need the majority, and that's what we got right there.
Gives the kids ability for four games. I guess draft a letter of approval for eleven to sunset on Sundays.
Oh, you're the boss now?
You said you needed a thing, you were looking at me! Figured you didn't wanna say it.
No, I, I'm, I...
Because you're against it, I get it.
I am not in favor of that. Can't convince you guys, you know, leave it at twelve-thirty start time.
I agree with that, but eleven gives them another game.
And it's compromising, but then we take an hour and a half and they get an hour and a half.
So you wanna make it eleven to six?
Huh?
You wanna make it eleven to six?
That's an extra hour and a half, so at least six-thirty, you gotta, they need two hours.
The idea is to fit in the games.
Right, they need at least two hours for an extra game. Is their complaint, because they only have time for three. So we, we're giving the parents, the residents, an hour and a half. But we're also giving the kids an hour and a half in the morning, right? And then if we give them at least another half hour.
We're not giving the residents anything. Right now, the residents have till twelve-thirty.
Right, but...
So we're taking it away from them.
And we're not giving them exactly what they want.
And we're giving them, and we're giving them more on the tail end too. So we're taking that away from the residents. So we're taking three hours away from the residents. Not giving them an hour and a half.
We're taking away less than they wanted us to.
It's still tight. It's doable, but it's still tight.
Twelve-thirty to sunset lets them play three games.
That's not enough.
They said that you two double headed this whole thing, is that they need four?
No, they said they like, sometimes they play double headers, but if they can't play a double header, you don't think they're gonna play three games and not do a double header, or do one on Saturday? You know, their scheduling is, is not something that is a concern of this commission. Concern of this commission is land use and protecting the rights of the property owners. That's our responsibility.
You're correct. Can we let them start setting up at eleven? Can they start games at five-thirty?
My concern with that is how many other properties do we say can't be used until twelve-thirty on Sunday in the town?
How many other private ball fields do we have?
It's a ball field, I know it's a, it's a baseball field, but, you know...
You know, it's an outdoor recreation use.
I just wanna bring up again that we're really talking two months. That's it. Of the whole year, two months, and we're talking now only an hour and a half earlier. That's their concern, the earlier.
No, we're talking an hour and a half earlier. With your concept, we're talking an hour and a half earlier and an hour and a half later.
Right, but they even commented that the night didn't bother them as much as the morning.
So we're actually giving them two and a half hours at night. Because we're, if we say sunset, or no later than eight-thirty, I think is what the regulation currently says, um, that's giving them two and a half hours in the evening.
Right, so what's sunset right now? Quarter to six, right?
Yeah, and, and next week, it'll be quarter to seven.
Right, so quarter to seven, that's all.
And by the middle of summer, it's eight-thirty, quarter to nine.
They're not playing baseball then?
They're playing until July first. June twenty-sixth is the longest day of the year. So they're playing in the, in the time of the year where we have the most daylight hours. So they'll have light till eight-thirty.
So do we not have to go to sunset? Right now, it's six-thirty, right?
Six.
Six.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I'd rather give them more time at the end of the day and not...
I don't know, even if we said seven, eleven to seven's still eight hours, right? And eight hours is four games with nothing in between.
No, I'm saying give them till eight-thirty in the evening.
Right, so you're giving an hour and a half more at night, but you're taking an hour and a half more, so it's...
No, I'm not, not taking anything off the day, I'm leaving, I'm leaving it as it is and giving them two and a half hours at the, at the end of the day.
They're not gonna get that full two hours at the end of the day at first for at least a month, month and a half, right? Month? Dark is gonna be seven, then maybe seven-fifteen, then seven-thirty, it's not gonna be eight-thirty, so you're, they're really, that's my concern about the night, it's sunny every day at eleven.
What if we do an eleven-thirty start? Twelve o'clock start? Want those extra hours? I'd use a little more cushion.
I still say eleven is late enough.
Twelve o'clock?
You do twelve o'clock and then go till eight-thirty?
No, the kids don't have to go to school, head start.
What's that? Why is Saturday night not in this part? Because they, they don't wanna play Saturday night, they wanna play Sunday. Noon to sunset.
That's not, that's not enough.
It's more than what they have.
Can you give them a little bit of time setting up?
I'm talking about game time.
They're gonna show, they're gonna show up earlier to stand up.
Right now, they go earlier to do setup. The games are limited twelve to sunset. Noon to sunset. Can we, can we get a consensus on that?
Not from me.
I can live with that.
What about dinner? What about getting the kids home and, and dinner and homework and getting ready for Monday? I just got a problem with doing it late when we can do it an hour and a half earlier. Eleven is late enough in the morning to me.
I disagree, I disagree.
Jeez, I mean, what time do you wake up? I wake up, my wife wakes me up at six, six-thirty, regardless of whether I have a day off or not. By eleven, I'm late enough, sure is.
Some of us tend to sleep a little bit later and like to have a nice relaxed Sunday morning. Dominic, you said that you would, could live with noon to the sunset?
I could compromise, I, I'd like to have eleven.
But you could compromise at noon? Could you compromise at noon?
Eleven-thirty, noon? Nine-eleven, ten, eleven forty-five?
We had eleven, we, we had it already.
I mean, I wanna make, I would love for them to be able to do four games, that's...
Well, listen. Do you wanna table this until our next meeting? Or are we gonna come to a consensus? Because we're not gonna sit here and, and not make any progress. So what do you wanna do?
I mean...
They're here to get the time for four games, and if they're not gonna get it, then let's not do anything yet. Twelve-thirty to sunset's not gonna be enough at first. And it's really no point at that point.
And we had a majority for eleven to...
Yeah, I think Dominic is having second thoughts about that. All right, gentlemen, are we going to come to some kind of a consensus or are we gonna table this till our next meeting?
I'm eleven to sunset.
Dominic, what time?
Let's table it.
I, I do eleven to sunset, but I guess we're tabling it, I don't know.
I don't know, we're like...
I mean, I'd, I'd be happy to, I'd be happy moving forward.
What? Well, I was just gonna say, I can draft something. You're not gonna vote on it tonight anyway. So you can mull over the hours, the next, whatever. And that part will just fill in at the, when you come back, because you're gonna come back either way. Because you're not resolving it tonight.
I think we agreed we were approving something. We just haven't ironed out the times.
He's right.
So why don't we draft a letter of approval and then we continue to worry about figuring out the times?
Leave, leave the, leave the times open.
Yeah, you're tabling that part, because you're, you're, in a way, you're tabling it anyway, because you're not deciding.
Yeah, because we're not gonna vote on it tonight anyway.
We have to wait till next, yeah. And then, didn't he say it starts the end of March, the season, right? And then to schedule.
Our, our process is...
We could, we couldn't approve it tonight.
We wouldn't be approving it tonight anyway. We, we deliberate, we instruct staff to do a, an approval letter. And once we have the approval letter in hand, that's when we vote. And once we have the approval letter in hand, that's when we vote on an application. The only exceptions to that are like tonight, we voted on a...
The menu.
The menu board. That's because that was a amendment that was put forward by the commission.
Because Will did such a good job.
All right, so Will's gonna do an approval, leave the times blank, we'll hash this out at our next meeting. All right. Anything else that we should be deliberating on? Folks, our meeting is not over, so please keep it down. Item number fourteen, Regulation Review Amendment Work Session. We don't have anything scheduled. Let's, uh... Let's leave that for now. Correspondence, I have not received any correspondence. Commission reports. We have held the majority of our P O C D
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Focus meetings.
I try making them. I really do.
The next meeting will be in April. Have we gotten anything back from Francisco yet on a date for that, Rick?
Uh, no. Our next workshop's next Wednesday, eleven.
The morning.
That's a morning workshop.
I think he wants to ask something.
Yeah.
Well, we gotta get a date picked in April and get that on the calendar.
Okay, so can we talk a little bit about what kind of day, what kind of time?
No earlier than seven P M.
What is this for?
Another P O C D townwide meeting.
This isn't like the focus group?
This is not the focus group. This is...
This is a workshop where he would give some type of presentation. So we'd have a general session, a general public collection with some commentary.
Oh, I apologize.
And then we would have breakout sessions that people could rotate around different specific topics that would be facilitated by a staff.
So this is the big one?
Yeah, this would be the big one.
Like the high school or something?
Yes, we need enough time for advertising, getting it promoted, and so it'd be an evening meeting at seven.
And it will also be after the survey is released.
I said it.
Yeah.
What's your preference? The high school? Or the library?
Library's too small.
Too small?
Yeah, hopefully, the library's too small. I hope we gotta get...
Maybe the cafeteria.
Yeah, we'll get the cafeteria.
The last time everyone fit in the library.
They were all in the library last time, yeah.
Well, the thing is, if we're gonna do breakout sessions, we need more room, because you need some space separation.
We did that at the library. We just set up, you know,
Separate tables.
Little separate tables for the breakout groups.
How many people?
Not a lot.
Well, it's...
Is this ten years?
Ten years ago.
So we get the school and more parking?
Okay, school.
No.
Well, in April...
If it's not the library, you gotta send some notice. A lot of people are thinking the library.
Who? No, that's for the morning meeting next week.
That's the eleventh.
Talk about a different meeting that hasn't been scheduled yet.
That's the first selectmen and the E D C focus meeting. We're talking about the meeting that's gonna be held in April.
What time is it? Eleven to sunset?
No, noon.
Let's not make it too early.
What day of the week is the best for scheduling?
Well, that's what I...
When there's not a lot of...
Yeah.
Any good day?
It's always them meetings. Embarrassing. Maybe not on a Monday, Wednesday?
Yeah, like midweek, Wednesday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
Wednesday or Thursday?
Okay.
Wednesday.
Wednesday?
I'm off, so I could do something on Wednesday.
It was at seven P M.
You're busy Wednesdays?
I still work till seven on Thursday. That's why some weeks I barely make it.
How about Tuesdays?
I'm busy.
Busy Tuesdays also.
What day is good for you?
Monday.
Sunday.
Not too early, though.
All right, let's try to focus on...
I'm very focused. I just said I'm available Mondays.
Is this for what?
If it doesn't work for anybody else, make it another day. I can't make it.
Are we talking the end of April?
We're talking April and we have...
April, generally.
We have a meeting the first and third week. We have a commission meeting. So it should either be the second or the fourth week of April.
I can do Mondays, if that's the question. I know you won't have town council there, though, right? Depending on when those meetings are, it might be nice to get them, show up.
Yeah, I don't know if they come.
Hi, we're gonna have to look at the schedule townwide and see what...
Look at the townwide, talk to Francisco. And let's get, you know, two or three possible dates that he's available, and then we'll decide. Any commissioners have anything to report? No. Take that's a no. Staff?
Uh, my report to the zoning enforcement, thirty-five and fifty-eight, past doors, walk, unregistered motor vehicles, and junkyard conditions. So a notice of violation went out on that. And the demolition permit has been applied for, for six eighty-five Main Street, the former circle dog. And as the chairman indicated, our last focus group session's next Wednesday, March eleventh at nine A M. It'll be a breakfast meeting. At the library. No permits for new single-family homes.
Do we have a notion of who's gonna show up on that meeting from the commission?
I'm gonna try and make it...
I'll be there.
You gotta have somebody, because we kinda have, it's your meeting.
I'll be there.
I'm expecting to be there, but it'll all depend on what might come up at work.
Yeah, I'm expecting. This is Monday, right? Is what you said?
No, no.
Wednesday, the eleventh.
When's the eleven?
Nine A M.
Nine A M.
At the library.
Next week. Yeah. She can be donuts.
I'm off, so it's good.
All right.
Okay.
If nothing else, we're adjourned.